Good evening, and welcome to the March 3rd City Council meeting. If you'd join me for a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. Okay, Ms. Zralowsky, roll call, please.
Luke Kellier.
Here.
John Bermal.
Here.
Dan Walter.
Here.
Joshua Lee.
Here.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to item number three. This is citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for anybody to address the council about issues. If you want to come up and state your name. Typically, though, is there an issue later in the agenda you want to talk about? Or is this separate?
No, this is from...
Okay, come on up, yep.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
If you'd state your name and address, please.
Sure, no problem. Jeff Carvell, 17616 Fairfax Avenue in Farmington. I was here with the... Oh, do you want the zip and stuff too? Okay, I'm sorry. I was here at the last meeting when we were going through the North Creek development. And I just wanted to make you aware that I had gotten a... A... Sorry, God.
Happens to me all the time.
Oh, sorry. I had gotten a survey from the Midwest Natural Resources of the wetland that was developed... That we're developing a wetland. And it was considered to be all wetland before. And now, since they've been working on it, there's only a small section that's considered wetland. And I just wanted to... I know I gave you copies of this last meeting, and I wanted to make it available to the other members. And so here are copies of it.
I want to give it to our clerk.
Sure, I'm sorry, thank you very much. I believe had sent me an email saying that it was considered the part that is wetland is man-made, so they can develop on it. But I wanted... I forwarded that on to the EPA to find out if that's true or not. And also to the company that did the... Or the firm that did the study. And just to make sure that that's what it actually is supposed to be, because I don't believe you can develop on wetland. I just don't want anybody to get in trouble over it. And I wanted to make it... Make you aware of it. Which, if it is, then that's... The bigger issue was that he forwarded on... The person that did it forwarded it me on to the United States Forest and Wildlife Service, which said that when we did the original thing a month ago, there was eagles on that development. And they can't... Unless they have an eagle nest permit or they have a specific or a general permit, they can't take down within 600 feet of an eagle's nest, which I think is pretty normal. But I have neighbors who have pictures of eagles. And I just don't want the city of Lakeville or anybody to get in trouble for it without actually being aware of it. So here's that email from... And so if you want to take a look at that also. I just want you to be aware of it, so that she... I am going to tell them that they're developing that land back there. And she emailed me back saying, well, if they do do that, it's going to be fines. And they're going to have to stop, and they're going to... There's going to be fines. And I don't want to end up having fines for the city of Lakeville. Because I'm assuming that's what's... What she's talking about is finding the developing firm, the engineers, and the... Probably the city of Lakeville. So I just want you to be aware that I'm going to be contacting them again. So... And we were also wondering, I believe Mr. Miller had emailed my wife and I, what about the 11... 10 or 11 stipulations? Who's supposed to be making sure that that gets done before that development starts taking place? With your email, I'm sorry, the first time.
Okay, well, I'll follow up with you on the fish and wildlife stuff, and then we'll get your clarification on the other question you had to.
Because you had... Or someone on the board had brought up them fixing the sign and getting rid of some trees and stuff like that. I just want to make sure it gets done before.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Any other citizen comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number four. Any additional agenda information, Mr. Miller?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on to item five, and that is our Park and Recreation Quarterly Report. And I'll turn it over to our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Macy Archin. Good evening.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I'll be doing our quarterly report. This covers December through February. So a little bit of end of last year, beginning of this year updates. So to start with, to talk a little bit about what we've been working on administratively for the department. Several initiatives that I do want to touch base on tonight. The first of which is, of course, Grand Prairie Park. So construction continues at the park. This winter, we've completed now framing for the field support building. That's the building closest to the pickleball courts. The structural steel has been installed on the main building, and they'll actually be working on framing that in later this week. We'll start weather pending. That is the building that's closest to the splash pad and the playground. And then we've completed backfill at the grandstand, but have been meeting with our contractors continually throughout the season. So work is progressing, but kind of slowly at this point, which we anticipated. Things are moving along nicely. Spyglass Park Phase 2. This is actually one of the neighborhood parks that is going to be receiving an update this year. It's Phase 2. The original portion of the park is the lower portion. This was redesigned or redeveloped as the existing stormwater pond was added to the park. So we acquired additional land with that development to the north. And in that portion, we'll be installing a new multipurpose athletic deck. And as part of that project, we distributed 230 emails to the residents, received 53 comments back regarding that survey, and have since made some good, I think, updates to the initial master plan and also based off of what we received from the Park Rec Natural Resource Committee. So this plan has shifted some minor adjustments here or there. But this is scheduled for construction here in 2025. Strategic planning, I touched on this the last time that I presented, but we've completed now two days of strategic planning for the Recreation Department and Heritage Center. And that included our Parks, Recreation, and Heritage Center staff, as well as representatives from the Active Adults and Parks Rec and Natural Resource Committee members. It was a two-day strategic planning process. We'll next be meeting with a consultant again to develop an implementation plan for recreation and an implementation plan for heritage. And once that's complete, I would imagine down the road, we'll be bringing those new initiatives to the council at a future work session. The other project that we've been working on in conjunction with the Communication Department is an update to the Parks and Recreation website. This is actually tied to a larger refresh to the city's website. And when that rolls out later this year, we will now have a new landing page for Parks and Recreation, a new URL or a direct URL to Parks and Recreation, similar to what we have for the Arts Center and the Heritage Center. And that's going to provide new opportunities for us to market our programs, facilities, and events. But also will provide new opportunities for us to be able to provide new information to the public, which we're excited about. And park maintenance. Park maintenance, our staff has been incredibly busy. So the... This winter, we flooded the ice rinks. So that's a 24-hour-a-day process for seven staff to get those opened up in time for the season. We had 52 seasonal summer... Or seasonal staff that managed the warming houses. That's 10 sites across the city and 20 different rinks. This year, the warming houses were open for 49 days. And during that time, staff counted over 14,000 users of those rinks. That's counted every hour, so there is some duplication in there to keep in mind. But still, a really impressive use this year. And Proxess, I touched on this also the last time. Proxess is the new locking system that we're using for the park system. Today, in fact, we finished the completion of the installation for the Steve Mashad Building. We finished the installation at the Performing Arts Building and the Fine Arts Building at the Arts Center. And at this point, that phase of the project is more or less complete. Later this year, we're going to be looking at some additions for the Heritage Center, so kind of a Phase 2 to that project. But results so far have been great with the new system. And we've got a notable retirement from our Parks Maintenance Crew. It's actually 19 years of service from Mark Deschanel. He retired today. We actually had three retirements from Park Maintenance, all within similar timeframes of service. And three new staff that have already been brought on. Our first of which started mid-February. That was Matt Stonestrum. And then we have a new staff member that's starting today and another in two weeks. But some big changes for Park Maintenance, but we're excited for those that have retired, appreciate their service, and then also welcome our new staff. And we've also been working on some upgrades to our signage throughout the park system. Couple of those notable improvements would include some new signage for the West Lake Marion Off-Road Bike Course, DISC Golf Course Wayfinding Signage, Educational Signs for Ritter Farm. That's both environmental signage and, as displayed here, new signage for the Ed Miko Environmental Learning Center. And then, of course, with the new park, Grand Prairie, we'll be doing quite a bit of additional signage there. And Recreation. So Recreation Facilities started reservations January 1st. We're currently sitting at 59 reservations for the John Henon Pavilion. Again, this year, we switched that to a two-per-day reservation time slot in May... From May through August. So allowing more reservations at that facility during that time period of the year. And then our shelters are sitting at 95 reservations so far. There are some very busy days, as you would expect. You know, some of the most popular days are already booked, but there is a lot of availability throughout the system, so we just encourage people to reserve sooner than later. And for special events, Recreation had the Santa Seacrest Store with around 500 participants, Illumination Walk with just about 200, the Winter Wonderland Pint-Sized Prom with 43, and the Youth Ice Fishing Contest with approximately 100. And for some of their other programs, we had the Dog Sled Rides, 262 Candle Making, Spring Pickleball, and the Jigsaw Jamboree, which is a new program that we're doing. It's one of the puzzle-making contests. That did sell out with 12 teams or 12 groups. We've added quite a few of those now for spring and summer, and those are reserving... Or registering well. And for other upcoming events for Recreation, quite a few coming up here in April. The Easter Egg Scramble, Golden Egg Hunt, Earth Day Celebration. And then, of course, coming up here this summer, starting June 16th, we'll have the Puppet Wagon, which will be returning back to the community. And moving on to the Arts Center. This December, they held the Holiday Art Sale and Empty Bowls fundraiser that was tied this year to the same weekend as Holiday on Main. Sold over 300 pieces of art made by local artists and $5,800 in sales. The majority of that goes back to the artists. The Arts Center does retain a percentage to help support the facility. Winter/Spring programs, it's been a busy season so far. So Pottery Program, sitting at almost 300 participants. Specialty Workshops, which are like the classic oil painting and the fuse glass, almost 100. And then the Youth Art Break. Those are programs that we offer specifically over spring break, sitting currently at 60 registrations. And for Performing Arts, also a solid winter. Christmas Carol Radio Play, An Enchanted Christmas. That's the Lakeville Area Community Band, sitting at almost 300 tickets sold. Chad Johnson Music, a tribute to the BJ's. And A Murder Is Announced, which is Expressions Community Theater. That's our local group with over 700 tickets. And just looking ahead for the Arts Center, the downtown Lakeville Art Crawl is coming May 10th. More information will be coming out on that, including the list of artists and the interactive map here in another month or so. The Live at the Lake Summer Concert Series, we've already sent out invites for that series. That's an application process. And staff will be announcing that as we continue to get contracts signed. So I would assume over the next six weeks or so. We are excited to announce, though, that Safety Signs will again be sponsoring that series for a two-year timeframe, '25 and '26, and appreciate their support. And Active Adults. Holiday Social. So this is the annual Holiday Social that's held in December. They had 160 participants at that. The Special Events, their Holiday Bake Sale, almost 800 in sales. The Holiday Cocoa Day, 10 participants. And the monthly Lakeville Luncheons, over 100. And they held their third annual Mardi Gras Party. So over 80 participants this year. That was on February 11th. And then memberships again continue to break records. I think I tell you this every time I present. But now sitting at over 1,607 members at the Heritage Center. But also really strong showings for their other events. The Card and Board Games, the Book Club, Craft... The Crafts and Fitness, just to name a few. And then as a reminder, the Summer/Fall brochure, this is our new brochure that's covering six months of the year, has been mailed out to all Lakeville residents. It is available online, and our registrations are already going fast. Some of the most popular classes and events are already starting to fill. So don't wait to check that out. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Council, questions, comments? So my just... Only question I have for you was, did you have the timeline on Grand Prairie Park? Or what are the key milestones over the next couple of months for construction?
Yeah, and I can send you the actual, our full construction schedule, if you'd like to see it or a highlight of it. But we're anticipating at this point to complete construction on the facility of the Field Support Building in the main building by mid-May. Our goal is still to be able to open the pickleball courts, playground, splash pad, and challenge course yet this summer. Our goal would really be July, I think, is what we're looking at. But it's all going to be weather-dependent. And we'll be installing turf or planting seed here this spring. We won't be using any of the athletic decks this year. And the grandstand, we're anticipating will be complete by mid-September. So that is also scheduled for a 2026 opening.
Fantastic, good report, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Moving on to item six, this is our consent agenda. These are more routine items for the council. Anything you'd like to highlight, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items tonight. Item 6E is a resolution awarding construction contracts for the 185th Street Expansion Project. So that'll be 185th between Apava and County Road 50. They're round about there, so we're looking forward to that. Items F and G are both donations to the Fire Department, and we appreciate those donations, as well as Mr. Macy Archin mentioned, the donation of safety signs for the community as sponsor for the Summer Concert Series. That's item 6O. And then item 6P is a list of other donations to the Park and Rec Department. And then lastly, 6U is a resolution accepting bids and authorizing contracts for the First Center. That's our First Responder Skills Training Center. And we're looking forward to that construction.
Okay, very good. Council, any items that you would like to pull for further discussion? If not, I will take a motion. Councilmember Lee?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item 6R from the agenda for further discussion.
Okay. Any other items? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda except for item R. So moved.
Second.
Okay. All is... Any further discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes except for R. We'll deal with that now. Let me just pull it up here. Hang on. Okay. So item R was related to an encroachment agreement on Orchard Trail. Anything that you wanted to discuss, Councilmember Lee?
Sure, I'll just provide a little bit of context about why I think it deserves a little bit more discussion. The item is encroachment agreement with Lesnow property for a private improvement on public property. It's my understanding that encroachment agreements are fairly limited on Lake Marion right now. This one stood out to me because of how significant this dock is from the property owner all the way across the public property, which is still considered Bassett Park. Granted, it is wetland at the moment, but it goes from one side of the parcel to the other. We have heard from lake owners and residents that this... Lake Marion is a busy lake as it is. And to me, adding another dock on there where another set of boats could access to it is a concern. And then just continuing precedent for adjacent landowners to extend docks onto the lake, again, for congestion of the lake with boats. But also, I mean, again, this is scaling the whole width of the public property. So I think it creates a barrier of access to the rest of the parcel if we needed... Or anyone wanted to use it. So that's what stood out to me, and I just thought it might be worth more discussion before approving.
I have a question with...
So, Member Volk, yep.
So it was my understanding from the agreement that... Maybe I'm wrong, but I thought if the city was going to do something with that park or whatever, then they'd have to remove their dock. Okay, so I guess I agree with you. I looked at that for a long time, trying to figure out, wow, okay. But then when I read the agreement, I thought, okay, so if we decide to do something with that park, we don't want everybody using the dock, right? I mean, the private dock, so then it could be removed. I just, you know, every neighbor next to him has a dock. You know, even the one that his exact next-door neighbor kind of angles, you know, I was like, oh, it's too bad they couldn't figure out a way to hook them up.
Right.
You know, but so that was the only... My thought process was, is if we wanted to do something, they knew that they were taking a risk that if we did something, that dock would be removed.
I agree on that. I think, though, there currently is a stream at one point, and the only historical satellite view I could tell was in 1997, there was actually water there. There may have been other years where there was water there as well. But in terms of using that stream, it would be blocked by a dock. I don't know what the other... What you all think about this, but I'm sure staff looked at all sorts of options for this dock. My preference would be for it not to be going across the whole parcel, and if there was any way to squeeze it in to the east side of that stream. So it doesn't look like it's going across the whole thing, but...
I don't know how you get away from how they work it out with the neighbor then, because then you're talking about having to use the neighbor's property, correct?
No, not necessarily. But it does... But the lake access would be very close to the other dock next door.
Yeah, the lot line goes... Sometimes the aerial photo is a little bit misleading, but the lot line goes all the way... The residential lot lines go all the way up to the park. There is no space between the park and the lot lines. Park, the city property. So if you... If you were on... If you were able to access the Dakota County GIS page and you click that, you'd see that the R property butts up against the homes. There is no open lake or open water there.
Right, right. And I think that part I understand, but again, I could be the only one, but it just seemed like a significant impedance to the area.
Yeah, and I understand your perspective. I mean, I don't... I'm not a legal expert. I do know that the state DNR has some rules related about how if your property touches water, even if it's not navigable, there are certain allowances for docks. And actually, I don't have that in front of me. I don't know if you know off the top of your head.
I do not, but I do know that they have the right to access the water, but the dock issue is really up to the city to decide whether they want to allow the dock. The DNR really doesn't control that aspect.
Okay. Councilmember Lee, yep.
Could you clarify a little bit more about the right to the water? Because I guess that's maybe the key point for me, is it didn't look like this property technically is a lakefront property.
Exactly. I agree. That was my initial reaction as well when I first looked at this. And then the property owner had provided some information that showed that the city in the past and the DNR has determined that there is... It does just barely touch shoreline in one, I think it's the northwest corner. So it's technically riparian. They would have riparian rights.
Gotcha, okay. Well, that is helpful, even if the water hasn't touched that property for a long time. Got it. Appreciate that.
I would just say, for me, I mean, I... We have gotten many requests over the years about people who live across the street from the lake, but there's no one across from them. They're city property, and we have not been willing to do that. And I think, at least in the past for me, it's because it hasn't touched directly, albeit very slight. I believe that this would qualify, but I'm comfortable with the agreement, knowing that if we do end up needing to use the property, then, you know, we would go through that. So I don't know if anybody else had any comments or questions related to... Is applicant here by chance? And it's a... It's not required, I just... If they wanted to say something, but it doesn't look like it, okay. Otherwise, I'll take a motion unless there isn't any further discussion. Councilmember Walter?
I move to approve an encroachment agreement with Michael Lesnow for private improvements on public property.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Dan Walter.
Aye.
Willie.
Aye.
Michelle Volk.
Aye.
Luke Kellier.
Aye.
John Bermal.
Aye.
Okay, very good, thank you, everybody. Moving on to item 7A, consider a preliminary plat for Air Lake DEA Second Edition. I don't know if we're going to turn over to Mr. McCoy from Dakota Electric or...
Yep.
All right.
Your and councilmembers, thank you for having us here today. My name is Connor McCoy, and I'm with Kim Lee Horn, speaking for Dakota Electric. Today, we are reviewing the preliminary plat for Air Lake Second Edition. This property is located north of 225th Street and west of Flastath Avenue. The applicant proposes to split Outlet B of Air Lake's DEA First Edition into two lots, Lot 1 and Outlet A. Both myself and Jeff with Dakota Electric are here today to field any questions that you may have during the presentation or after. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I have a staff report, Ms. Goodroad, welcome.
Good evening, mayor members of the council. Yeah, so DEA is here. They have submitted a preliminary plat for Air Lake DEA Second Edition. As the gentleman mentioned, the property is just north of 222nd Street, east of Cedar. The property outlined in red is the portion that's included in this plat. So if you recall, the last meeting, we had the preliminary plat to create the two outlots. So this is now the next step for DEA to create their lot and additional outlot. The property is Zone I-2, General Industrial, and is also Guided Industrial on the comprehensive plan. So again, here is the preliminary plat. The initial lot is basically this boundary. That's Lot 1. And then they're plotting an outlot for future development. And then that original plat, or the first edition, had the dedication of Right-Away for 222nd Street, and 225th Street is towards the south. Here's a blow-up of the site plan. It's a pretty straightforward project. There's no conditional use permits, it's just a preliminary plat. The property will be accessed from 225th Street as well as 222nd Street to the north. That's where all the service vehicles, operational vehicles, trucks, and so forth will enter. The property will have guest parking, employee parking in these two locations. And then this section is mainly the office building, about 70,000 square feet of the... Of the 176,685 square-foot building will be office, and that's a two-story portion, and that'll blend into really the operational side. So the goal with moving this facility to Lakeville is so that they can enclose all of their vehicles, as well as materials and so forth, and fleet vehicles. There is definitely some yard space for them to have some equipment outside. There's a couple of different kinds of asphalt, depending on what they're storing in those locations. But for the most part, most, all of the vehicles will be closed inside. The landscaping plan includes perimeter landscaping around all of the parking areas, building perimeter around the office building. Again, because this is only a body in one major public street, all of the landscaping is kind of concentrated here, since it really is an industrial, operational type of facility. All of the setbacks, all of those kind of minimum requirements, including parking requirements, are being satisfied. On the screen is the elevation plans. This, too, meets all of our exterior building material requirements. It's a combination of stone, architectural metal and glass. And the elevation that we'll be facing, 225th Street, is the second one. And then you've got the east, the north elevation, and the west elevation. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing at their February 20th meeting and unanimously recommended the project, or the approval. And there was no public comment at that meeting, and I would stand for any questions.
Okay, very good. Council, questions, comments? Councilmember Lee?
Director Goodroad, at the Planning Commission meeting, you mentioned how you had just had some conversations with the township about the access road, the dirt road. Could you expand on any developments since then?
We haven't had any more developments. We shared the plan. When the initial application came in, we shared the plan. And then we met with DEA staff to go through the plat, basically to share with them the alignment for 222nd Street. Eventually, you can see right here, that road will dip. They're just called to second it initially, and this is township property. So we wanted the township to be aware of the alignment for 222nd Street as it would extend into their site and touch Flagstaff. And it needs to be 1/8 of a mile from where the intersection of County Road 70 and Flagstaff will be. So we explained that to them. We did share with them, and they're very aware that 225th is going to have increased traffic. We have a joint powers agreement for maintenance. They are evaluating it. They're going to be talking about this roadway at their next board meeting. But there isn't anything definite as to when this possibly might be paved. It's something that they're studying. And then through that joint JPA, would be, the city would be providing our obligation based on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so on the, I thought that there was an agreement with MAC to pave that road. Is that east of Hamburg or?
I don't know. You're catching me because I don't have the history. There is some agreement, and I don't know the extent of how far their responsibility lies. Do you know?
I don't remember off the top of my head, Mayor. I do know that it's, it's coordinated with the expansion of the runway.
Yeah, okay.
We can get some more information on that for you.
Okay, yeah, I thought I was in a meeting with them, and maybe you know from Air Lake Advisory that there were supposed to be some paving happening there, but maybe I'm wrong.
My understanding was going west from Cedar was going to coordinate with the runway project. There is a request for maybe a small part, but right now, it's contingent on the runway expansion.
Got it, okay. All right, any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll take a motion. Councilmember Berman?
Wait a second. Sorry about that. I move to approve a resolution for the preliminary plat of Air Lake DEA Second Edition.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll just say, I'm, as I said the last, when you were here before, we're very excited to have Dakota Electric come to Lakeville. Sorry to our friends in Farmington, but we do appreciate you moving to Lakeville. So with that, I'll take a roll call, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Kellyer?
Aye.
Berman?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on to Items 8 and 9, unfinished and new business. Seeing none announcements, our next city council meeting is Monday, March 17th, right here in the council chambers, and our work session is March 24th. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All is in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.
Thank you.